And I've been working with like.
Follow the order. This is a public hearing of Bonner County zoning commission. Time is exactly five thirty P M. Date is November twenty first, twenty four. Location, first floor conference room in Bonner County Administration Building, Highway two. Meeting is being recorded and streamed live by Zoom and YouTube. The one you can see here, please click the like button and if you don't want to miss future episodes, be sure to subscribe and ring that bell. Please silence your pagers, digital watch alarms, personal digital assistants or any other electronic devices. So first let's stand and put the pledge of allegiance on. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The United States of America stands on one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All other things. Well, let's have a roll call first. Let's have a roll call of commissioners starting from my left, please.
Say my name, Jeffrey Paulson.
Commissioner Clark.
Commissioner Blazer, Devin Burke.
Thank you. So we have our illustrious chair is absent, but we still have a forum. So see, we don't have too many one attendants to the public. Is there anyone in attendance in need of special assistance? You see here or participate in these proceedings and can you all hear me all right? Okay. So first things first, let's deal with many changes to the agenda. You have each each commissioner, you have an agenda paper agenda and find your staff. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No.
Okay. Good there. Any commissioners, any changes? Great. So approval of minutes, we have two meetings worth of the minutes, one from seven minutes from September nineteenth and seven minutes from October seventeenth. Now, I know most of you were at in meetings, but I hear people actually have read through the minutes. They they are on the Google Drive. You can have a look if you want. Do any commissioner or staff member care to correct any of these? I did not see any errors. Read through both. Fairly lengthy. Okay, seeing none, I I think well, their minutes are approved under the consent agenda. So are given the agenda, are we going to stop here and do some swearing in and training?
Yep. So we have two items usually done. Typically, this, you know, we just do hearing items. Given we have three, three out of the five are brand new commissioners, it's appropriate to do some training with legal counsel. So Bill Bill Wilson's here to train you guys on what conflict of interest and ex parte communication is, when to recuse yourself. So we'll get to that here shortly. But before we do that, we need to swear in commissioners. So Jessica's here. She's a chief deputy under the elected clerk, Mr. Rosedale, who's unable to be here tonight. He's unavailable. He has a conflict. So Jessica's going to start with that. There's a copy of this in front of each of you. So she'll come up and show you in. And then you'll be officials.
So those that are getting sworn in, if you could rise, when you raise your right hand. I'm going to repeat after me. I instate your name.
I congratulate you.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Idaho.
And the Constitution of the State of Idaho.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of zoning commissioner.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of zoning commissioner.
According to the best of my ability. Congratulations.
We would sign those and. You guys can sign like.
We need to sign them down.
Yeah, you need a pen. We can grab some pens and then we'll get over and she'll sign them and then we'll. This is eerily similar to when you swear in with the military. So just know, just enlist for. If you're like. I just get flashbacks from my enlisted.
We've had hundreds of people during the.
Sit here, just wanted to stand up.
All right, guys. Well, my name is Bill Wilson and I'm the deputy prosecutor that works with the planning staff on on these quasi administrative files that you guys will work with. And so one of the things we like to do with new commissioners is give you some guidelines for things that you might not be familiar with and the rules that are now applicable to use since you just kind of signed your lives away. And they're not too bad really. They're common sense stuff, but it's important that you're aware of them because you are going to be making decisions that affect people's property and they can appeal. So when we have these files come before you, they implicate due process concerns. And that's just another way of saying that people deserve the right to notice an opportunity to be heard and then to see and rebut evidence or evidence that's presented. So where this comes into play for people in your position are it's a recurring patterns. There's a certain statutes in Idaho law that apply to all public elected or appointed officials. And I won't go into all of those tonight because there are some that are just specific for you guys. In the local land use planning act, there is a statute and it's the title is is conflict of interest prohibited and it's only applicable to planning and or zoning commissioners and also border commissioners if things get appealed to them. The reason it's it's relevant and important for you is that it's more strict than the rules that might apply to other appointed advisory boards. Because you are dealing with, you know, files of a little more importance. And so it just in essence, and I won't quote it because it's a little bit, a little bit lengthy, but whereas other elected officials who may have a conflict of interest may only have to disclose that interest and then they're able to participate in deliberations. You can't do that. So if you have a financial fiduciary interest in a file that might come before you, you you can't be a part of those deliberations. The same rule applies if somebody who's within two degrees of affinity or consanguinity to you has the same thing. So, you know, your spouse, your child, your parents, something like that, or a business associate, right? So if you have a partner in a business who has a file come before you, they obviously have a financial interest in the outcome of that decision and you would need to step down in that case and let the other commissioners make that decision. That's the gist of it. Some of the nuances we've had in the past. Members of the zoning commission who have had that issue come up and then ask, well, can I step down? Not participate as a as a commissioner, but still just participate as a member of the public, come up and say my three minutes. The statute says you cannot can you not cannot participate in any part of the deliberative deliberative process. And the legislative history on the statute shows that that includes being a part of it from the public side. If that ever becomes so important to you that you want to participate in a file, that the solution is to actually step down from your position and then you can participate just like any member of the public would do. It's very rare, but it does happen. So that is the statute that applies uniquely to you guys. And if you ever have a question, the simple thing to do is just send the email to the planning staff. It'll get forwarded to me. We'll look at it together and we'll just decide. And if I give you the go ahead and say that there's no conflict, then you're good to go and you don't have to worry about that. But my job is to give you cover for that. And one way or another, you can have the certainty of knowing that you've you've got an opinion. So if you ever have a, if you're ever in doubt, just you know, send the email and we'll work with it. That's the conflict part. The next big pitfall that that new commissioners and experienced commissioners can get into is what we call ex parte communication. Right? So when we create, when we have an application come into the planning staff, they do their work, they collect evidence for that that particular file and we create a record. And the decision needs to be made on that record. And what ex parte communication is, is in essence, is evidence that you receive from some outside source that's not part of that record. And therefore, somebody who might be opposed to that file or somebody who was opposed to the information that you received wouldn't have the opportunity to rebut that information because they didn't know you received it. That's what it is in essence. So how does that look in practice? You get an email. An unsolicited email from somebody. Hey, I heard you're on the zoning commission. They're doing a rezone next to my house. Let me tell you why I don't like it. Okay, that's ex parte communication, right? That's the most common kind. Or you get a phone call. Same thing. So how do we respond to that? The way we cure ex parte communication, even if you don't engage with them, is just to make it part of the record. So if you get an email like that, just forward it to the planning staff. Then they put it in the record and it's all good, right? You get a phone call. Yeah, there you go. Yeah. Once you've been in this in this position for a while, people don't understand that. They think that they're, you know, they see you as kind of a public official and they expect to be able to speak with you. The way to kind of diffuse that situation is if someone calls and asks you, just say, okay, I I'm essentially sitting in the position of a judge. It's a quasi judicial decision and I can't consider this information now, but what you should do is come to the hearing on such and such date and then you can you can have three minutes to explain your position to the entire board. And that's what you should do. And that's how you solve that problem. So the what we're trying to avoid and like the kind of the third rail of these things is engaging in something before the hearing that suggests you are biased, right? If you've done that to the to the extent that you know, a reasonable person would think you're no longer no longer able to objectively review that file, that's going to be a problem. And so that's there's case law on that, you know. We have some of it's from Bonner County, actually, twenty years ago, where maybe the a commissioner drove out to a site and looked at it with the developer. Not good, right? Because that's that creates the appearance that you have already maybe well, you've accepted a lot of ex parte communication and maybe you've made your decision already. So we don't want to do that, right? And and I think the phone calls and the emails are the most common thing that can get you tripped up. But even if somebody, you know, sees you at a party or football game or something like that and wants to talk about it, just politely say, hey, I I can't talk about that with you because it's pending right now and I want to respect everybody's rights. Does that make sense? Any questions about that? It's it's really kind of a common sense thing. Once you're aware of it. But if you're not actively thinking about that, it's real easy. Because it's something that's important to you. It's important to that person to to fall into start talking about it, but we don't want to do that.
Go on, listen.
Go ahead. I was gonna say, yeah. So we do get an email.
Yeah.
That we forward along to you. Are we under any obligation or or is it a courtesy to tell the person who sent the email, hey, I'm I'm including this in the record because they need to be notified.
Exactly. Well, I mean, is there is there a legal requirement to? Probably not, but as a matter of practicality, sure. You can. And that's the way you, that's the way, you know, if someone might be upset, it was you're like, no, I'm just not going to talk to you. Well, you could do that and they might not like it, or you could say, here's why I can't speak to you. Or why I can't respond to this email, but I have forwarded this to the planning staff and it's going to be included in the record. And I encourage you to come down to the hearing and you can talk about it there. Most people are fine with that. Sometimes they'll they'll email the entire board, including the county commissioners, and then they'll also forward it to me and include the planning generic inbox. So if you look at like the who it got sent to, if I'm included or planning at Bonner County IDs included.
It's already.
It's already out. Like, don't worry about it. We're going to grab that and put it in the public comments folder in the file. So don't reply, don't forward it, just don't worry about it. And I don't know why some people just want to, that's how they think their voice is going to get hurt is they're going to forward it to everybody, right? So, yeah. Panhandle Health, you know, like the Audubon Society. Everybody, I just wanted to make it known. So.
So back on ex parte, did you drive by a site and look?
Well, so it's it's so weird, like, you know, it's almost impossible to get to address every hypothetical, right? Let's just to change it a bit. What if what if that, what if the location for that proposed that that rezone or that C P? What if it's on your way to work? What if you drive by it every day, right? Okay. Well, like, did you, did you engage in ex parte communicate? No, not really. If you went out there, if you if it if the application came across your desk, you knew it was going to be pending before you and you went out and investigated, like got out, walked around, not good. Right? So again, use your use your good common sense and that should probably keep you on keep you right most of the time. But we had that, we had a commissioner, Lou Gammet, former commissioner who made that, he said, listen, I I drive, I come into work on that road every day. I know where this place is. I've looked at it, but no more than any other person who happens to drive by and nobody had a problem with that. So that's kind of the the way I described that. That's. The the idea is you don't go out of your way to find more information. Like if it's a rezone up at Switzer and you've been skiing there, right? It's you're not going there to look for more information. At the same time, be wary also. Don't communicate with each other about a file before the before the hearing. Don't email through each other. It happens every now and again where a commissioner will want some more information, so they'll include the other commissioners and staff. They kind of came turned into like a deliberation via email. It's like a, it it's a breach of open meeting law. You don't want to be deliberating or talking to each other about a pending file. Think of it like a, you're a judge with five heads and the judge needs to make an unbiased decision. So all you guys need to be on the same playing field. If you're reviewing the the staff report and say you see something that mentions a comment from Panhandle Health or something like that and you look for that comment, if not there, feel free to email staff or call me like, hey, I'm looking for this. Can you add it to the record? Can you add it to our file? And we'll we'll drop it in there. If you look at it and say, I really want some site site pictures of this, like, is it possible the staff can go out and grab those and add them to the file? Like, those are okay. Don't include the rest of the commissioners. We will include the whole thing into the file so everybody's on the same playing field again. Yeah, the the goal is to get everybody together at a noticed and agendized time with all the information available for everybody, right? Because that goes back to that due process idea. Okay, maybe the applicant themselves is going to want to know what you're reviewing more often than not, just based on past practice. If it's a controversial file, there'll be a lot of members of the community who are opposed to that. That's just going to be the nature of some of them. And those people want to know that they are looking at the same information that you guys are. But whatever your decision is, right? Because if they find out later that you were, you know, had taken taken a call from somebody or did something, they're going to be upset about that. And so we just want to try to avoid that as much as we possibly can. And if you're looking at a comment from an agency like IDL or PhD, you're like, man, I really, I don't understand everything they're talking about. Please don't pick up the phone, call them and ask questions. Don't reply to an email. Don't don't go and try to meet with one of them and ask them questions about their comment. Just take that back to staff and say, hey, I don't understand X, Y, and Z. Can you get a hold of that agency and have them update their comment or provide additional information or ask what they could show up at the hearing so I can ask them some questions? Does that make sense? So use us as like your intermediary. Don't go look for information on your own. Feel free to bring the question. That's absolutely fine. But use staff to get the information because what we're going to do is distribute it back to the whole board again. And again, if you guys, you know, we can, we can try to make hypotheticals, right? But there's almost a guarantee that there things will happen. You know, scenarios that will will come up that maybe we didn't cover tonight and you have questions about. That's perfectly fine. I am now your attorney, you know, and and Jake is now your guys' liaison, right? Like, we are here to support you. So if you have questions like that, feel free to, you guys will have also, I think, part of the gig is that you get a complimentary email address, right? Oh, yeah. Yeah. It'll be on our website. Try to use that, actually. So one of the, so that one of the things about that is now and again, we get public records requests. But now the communications you make in your official capacity are subject to those things. So if you, it probably behooves you to use the the public email address. So you're not trying to go through and you know, looking through the the Amazon orders in your private email account and then the the emails you sent as a commissioner from your private one. Don't do that. Use your use your public email account. And that makes it a lot easier for us to manage. They don't really ask for your guys' emails. I that's almost very, very rare, but you know, especially with the board of commissioners, people want to see those emails a lot. And so it's it would be, it would be crazy for them to use their own private email accounts. And so you guys should probably just follow suit. Don't engage in social media. Yes, yes. I'm trying to think of the what I've seen and please don't do. Because every now and again, I have to make a phone call and say, hey. Oh, yeah. I I said it the last time. I'll say it again. So Dan McDonald was a friend of mine. He was a commissioner for six years. And I told him a hundred times not to use Facebook and he told me to pound sand. And don't get me wrong, like I still like the guy. He's a buddy of mine. That was one and he he never got dinged on it in a case, but people tried. The people tried to say, and what will happen is that well, the case law says that you're a public official, you have the right to make comments in the in the social sphere, right? But if it could be portrayed as you having pre decision bias, like why, like if you come out and say, I support this file before the decision is made, that's really bad, right? And we had some cases, thank goodness, we never lost on this issue before, but we I had to defend that because of some of the social media stuff that was said. So if you can, don't you know, I social media is bad for us anyway. But especially bad for elected officials who are trying to make decisions like you guys are going to do. So just don't bring them up there. I don't think that's ever been an issue with a planning or zoning commissioner. You guys are a little different breed than the elected official, than the board of commissioners. But if you are inclined to do that, please don't.
So one other thing that has happened to me is especially contentious issues is you're out there, you're out in the lobby and during a break, either the applicant or their friend, Andrew something.
Yeah.
That's not part of the.
Here's a letter. Yeah. You hand it to staff. We'll stamp it in as an exhibit. You bring it back in. Yeah. But you see, you see the the recurring theme that we're trying, every time you're given something that only you've seen, the solution is just to bring it in and show it to everybody. Once you do that, it's really, I mean, you've basically cured, actually. So I also advise Boundary County. Okay, I do that, too. We had a recent hearing up there where big group of people, we had a, I don't think I told you this, we had a it was a break, everybody, you know, every hour or so, get up and use the restroom or whatever, five minute break. And during the break, one of the commissioners went down into the crowd and was talking to one of the people who had testified. And I was like, get his ass back, get him up here. Like, he can't do that. So after the after the the break was over, I made him, I was like, okay, I just saw you talking to somebody in the crowd. We're back on the record now. Tell everybody exactly what you said so that it's back in the record for everybody. And he was like, oh, we just talked, you know, we just, it wasn't anything, you know, I'm like, okay, fine, good. But I, you know, I didn't want that to be something that people would look at. You know, and say, well, he was talking to somebody who has said they either support or don't support the project. So I'm I made a lie, like, I cracked the whip and made him say that, you know, it wasn't, it was no big deal. He told, it was, it was nothing malicious. But we just have to be cognizant of those things. I think that your chair, Mr. Marvel, has done this a couple of times during the break. He says, please don't talk to the commissioners. You're standing next to the urinal. Don't talk to the file, please. Like, because it's happened, you know, you're standing in line in the bathroom because you get, you know, eighty, ninety people in the room sometimes. It's, you know, they they just want to talk to you. They they want to influence the decision. So no, don't talk to me, please. So just try to avoid, so. And yeah, and I don't mean to, look, we are cognizant of the rules, but we want to make things as professional as possible, right? At some level, we're trying to recreate the formality of a courtroom experience, right? That's not realistic for some hearings. When there, when there was a lot of people in here, they have an expectation of what they want to say. Things are going to get a little, you know, get a little contentious and stuff and have an eye, have these these rules kind of cogitating, right? But doesn't mean you can't be friendly. It doesn't mean you can't just not look or speak to anybody. We're just saying redirect them back into here and that's that's all we can do. Yeah, good.
Yeah, good, you guys will have some controversial files in the next four months, so. Just a heads up, this is really good timely discussion, cause we have a hearing tonight. We don't have anyone upset about it, this is a really good practice run, but we, we'll, we'll have some in the near future, like, in the next four months.
My first one, uh, forty-five people.
That's nice.
Well, we could be upset.
Depends on what happens, you don't know, you don't know. All right, guys, well, um, and by the way, welcome to the organization, you know, um, thank you for your service, this is, this is a. It's a valuable thing that you do, and not always. Uh, recognizes that.
Thankless job.
Thankless job, there we go, but that's a public service for you, um, so careful what you wish for, um. Again, my name is Bill, please feel free to communicate with me if you need to, and welcome to Mark County. And I'm gonna take some pizza and hit the road.
Thank you.
Sorry, guys, I just sit through all that.
If you guys, uh.
So I, I think I, I provided, at least that you do, I need, I owe you an email, Spur Camp on, like, a welcome to the zoning commission. But a whole bunch of information, and I'll get you access to the G drive and an email account, so. Uh, I lost my assistant director like three and a half weeks ago, so I've been doing two jobs and, and some things get, yeah, they fall off my plate, so.
Needs a nameplate.
Yeah, just. Can we order Mr. Burkham by name? Yeah, we'll get you a nameplate before the next meeting.
No, no bathroom, special bathroom.
No, sorry, no, uh, so if you guys, after. You know, sometime in the next few weeks, if some questions come up, feel free to email me, uh, regarding this, this information you just got tonight, cause. It's a lot, right, you get half an hour of an attorney, and gives you a whole bunch of stuff that you shouldn't, shouldn't do, but if you ever get a weird scenario. The best thing to do is always just reach out to me, so, okay, I think that's all we have, uh, Mr. Clark.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Okay, well, let's proceed, uh, to the file hearing. For those who may not be familiar with these public hearings, I'll introduce the process, uh, zoning commissioners are myself and gentlemen on my left and right. We're volunteers, we serve on written commission because we live in Bonner County, work in Bonner County, have friends and family here. Because we love Bonner County, our jobs feel as objective as we review applications that you heard. Got a, a very good introduction, having to do it zoning and land use, we're not employees of the county, we're not politically elected, and we're not paid for this service. Do our best with support from the professionals, Bonner County Planning Department and other county and state department to review the application. So as you heard, the zoning commission is a quasi judicial body, meaning we don't make the rules, we simply follow rules. This is in contrast to the, to the sister commission, the planning commission, which is a quasi legislative body, meaning they make any of the rules that we follow here. We're working on the comprehensive plan. People on my left are staff members of the county planning department, staff members are employees of the county. And subject matter experts in the area of zoning, planning, permitting, and they spend countless hours helping professionals and do yourself first. Properly planned projects affecting. The act is filters ensuring that what comes before this body is well-prepared. Indeed, there are many applications and requests that never make to this, these public hearings because the proposals are simply incompatible or publicly. And you guys, the public are also present tonight. The commission solicits public testimony that helps the commission to learn about facts relevant to these files. Facts that may not have been known to the applicant, the representative for planning, except public testimony and reform from these hearings. And we love written testimony because we have more time to review it ahead of time. So we only have one file, uh, to review tonight, an application to modify a conditional use permit. The procedure for hearing file is followed, the staff will present the staff report, left here from the roster. And the applicant or their representative will present an overview of the project again from the roster. Commissioners, you may ask questions of staff after their, during or after their presentation and the applicant. Normally it happens after they've given their presentation, but if it's something particularly irrelevant, you can, and they don't mind being interrupted. The commission will then open the hearing for public testimony, I'll explain the rules for public testimony at that time if we have it. The applicant and staff will have the opportunity to rebut any new information presented in public testimony, and then finally. Will close, public testimony will deliberate, and perhaps we'll vote. Okay, onto the file. So, reading from. Reading from the agenda. Our only file in front of us tonight is file MOD zero 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 four dash twenty-four. Modification of conditional use permit C eight nine seven dash oh nine. And CM eight nine seven dash one zero four, commercial resort sleeps cabin. The applicant is requesting modification of an existing conditional use permit, file C eight seven. Eight nine seven oh seven and CM eight nine seven ten, to expand the existing commercial resort. To a portion of the adjoining, adjoining property. Property is zone recreation and suburban, project is located off Sleeps Cabin Lane. In section thirty-four and thirty-five, township fifty-seven north, range two west Boise, Meriden. Okay, so, as we just heard from our legal staff. Is there, are there any commissioners that may need to recuse themselves, uh, or have any expertise communication to disclose? Seeing now, now I do, I do know, I don't think this is a, a conflict. But I do know two of the owners of condos, absolutely, uh, but I. Don't talk to them regularly, they're, they're just casual friends, but I hang with occasionally, and one's a friend of my wife's. Um, I've never talked to them about any of the issues here, but I don't think, I don't think it's a problem, yeah.
Let's just, let's just state, like, I, I, you mentioned this to me before the meeting, so let's just state for the record. You don't have a financial interest, you're not a business partner with any of those individuals, and they're not related to you, correct?
That's correct.
Perfect.
Okay, so, okay, proceed.
Thank you, commissioners. Uh, my name is Alex Fan, I am a planner with Bonner County. And today we're gonna hear a modification to an existing resort from Sleeps Cabin, file number MOD zero 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 four dash two four. The applicant is requesting a modification of an existing conditional use permit, file C eight nine seven dash oh seven. And CM eight nine seven dash one zero. To expand the existing commercial resort to a portion of, of an adjoining property, the property is zone recreation and suburban. Project is located off Sleeps Cabin Lane in section thirty-four and thirty-five, township fifty-seven north, range two west Boise, Meriden. For the applicant, the purposes of this application is to adjust the, adjust the lot lines to include an existing cottage on the eastern property into the current resort use. For the applicant, the cottage in question has been a part of the resort use as a legal non-conforming use, as resorts are not permitted in suburbia. So this is a, uh, view of the site, uh, that cottage in question is. Uh, right here to the eastern part of the, of the property where my cursor is. These, these are the standards at which this application was reviewed against. We'll get into background information, the site is currently being used as a resort, and this proposal would expand. All this existing use and include a currently legal non-conforming use on an adjacent property. These are planted lots, uh, both lots are a keyland of total of one point two acres. There's a recreation and suburban, and have a land use designation of urban. The access to this property is accessed directly off Sleeps Cabin Lane, a privately owned and maintained road. The site does contain slopes of zero to thirty percent grade, uh, you can see on the. Left-hand side or on the right-hand side, left picture is, uh, a light art slope layer on our GIS. The clear indicates zero to fifteen percent, yellow is fifteen to twenty-nine percent, and red is thirty percent graded. Uh, the site does contain mapped wetlands, um, the other picture shows, uh, map wetland that it just showed has frontage on Lake Ponderay and. Um, is included in the wetlands layer from the, uh, United States Fish and Wildlife Service. Uh, the parcel is within special flood hazard areas, zone AE and X. Um, and they are served by Southside Water and Sewer District for water and sewage services. Stable Fire District, Vista Utilities, and Lake Ponderay School District number eighty-four. This is an overview of the suburban district, per BRCRC twelve dash three point three. Resorts are not permitted within the suburban district, however, per the applicant, the proposed cottage that is requested to be included. In the resort has been used in the same manner as the other cabins included in the current conditional use permit. There has been no proof of continuous use since November eighteenth, two thousand and eight by the applicant. In order to be considered legal non-conforming, the burden of proof is on the applicant to prove that this has been in continuous use. Um, this is, uh, included as a, a B condition, a B condition is a condition that needs to be fulfilled before we will issue a permit. Uh, so, uh, that would be left up to staff to, um, to, uh, determine if B conditions have been met. Next is the recreation district, uh, resorts are conditionally permitted in the recre- recreation zoning district. The applicant hasn't issued conditional use permit C zero eight nine seven dash oh seven. And then issued modification to the conditional use permit, CM zero eight nine seven dash one zero. For the applicant, the purpose of the modification is to modify the site plan to allow for the expansion of the resort use to include an existing cottage. So this is a snapshot of the commercial use table, uh, we're looking at, uh, commercial resorts. Um, as you can see highlighted, it is conditionally allowed in the recreation zones and not allowed in the suburban zones, but as we spoke before, it would be. Considered a legal non-conforming use, if the applicant can show over and approve. Uh, we're going to look at, uh, notes three and twenty-two within the commercial use table. So note number three is where access to the site is by road, the road shall be located within a recorded easement or public right-of-way. And constructed to the appropriate standard set forth in Title II of this code, or Appendix A of this title. Except we're subject to the terms of an approved special use permit issued by a state or federal agency. Staff response, the property is located off Sleeps Cabin Lane, a privately owned and maintained road via Lake Shore Drive, a Bonner County owned and maintained public right-of-way. There is no evidence of the construction of Sleeps Cabin in Bonner County, or of Sleeps Cabin Lane. And, uh, Bonner County Garden Bridge has not commented on the construction of Lake Shore Drive. For note number two, commercial resorts on sites meeting the minimum lot size of the applicable zoning district, but no less than one acre. Resorts may include facilities for food and beverage sales, rented seasonal living units, retail sales of equipment. Supplies or services in conjunction with the resort, campgrounds, or recreation vehicle parks. The project site is approximately one point two acres, however, this includes the entirety of the eastern lot, not the portion that is going to be adjusted to the resort lot. Uh, the applicant received approval for variance, file number V three eight two dash oh seven. To allow for the, a deviation to the lot size minimum of zero point eight eight acres. For the applicant, the current site was divided, uh, by a condominium plat to allow for individual ownerships of the cabins. Next is parking standards, there's no specific requirement for off-street parking for commercial resorts. Uh, but it appears that the applicant would have ample area for parking for the cabins on the property. A list, a full list of agencies that were notified of this, uh, project, uh, can be found in Annex A of the staff report. Uh, we did not receive any comments from agencies, but we did receive two no-comment replies. One is from the Idaho Department of Fish and Game, and we received one yesterday, um, I don't know if it's in your packet today, but it was a no-comment reply from the. Cooney-Pondery Sewer District. And we did not receive any public comments on this file. And that concludes my presentation, I can answer any questions that the, uh, commission may have.
Thanks, Alex, uh, any questions, any commissioner?
What, what's the, uh, the cabinet question?
Uh, yeah, so it is, uh, I believe it's, correct me if I'm wrong, Brett, but I believe it's this cabin right here where my cursor is.
Yeah, that's, um.
Put those purple property lines on there. Are, are way off.
Yeah, our, our GIS layer is on, uh, survey accurate. Yeah, i- i- it's more for educational purposes, not really, uh, those are not surveyed lines, they're just approximate locations. So that cabin in relation on the site plan would be, uh, this one, I'll share.
Well, this might be a better question for the applicant, but I can wait, but, uh. When this was first, this CU P was first put in. Um, there was a zone change with it, why didn't these just change the zone of the whole area when nothing gone back to?
That's a great question for the applicant, I'll let him speak to that when we, when we get to the, uh, the applicant, applicant portion.
Oh, okay, I'll make sure I have it. Make sure the history of it too, that would, that would go. Okay, I, that's all I had, I didn't have any other question, very clear. So, uh, thanks again, Alex, does the applicant wish to give a report or?
Yeah.
Come up to the mic either there or there, definitely when you want, either at the roster, if that's on the read or.
So, my name is Brett Sleep, and we own Sleeps Caverns, and this is my way better half, Tony. Of thirty-eight years. And I, I can start by showing you a little history of the place, but if I could have approached the bench. I could show you this, this is a little more. That's, so. This, this is Lake Shore Drive. This whole thing is the property. Uh, this section here is what we call a cam on the property, and this over here is the condo property. So, by this L shape, we've got some of the lakefront and it kind of landlocked this. So my grandparents started this, uh, in nineteen thirty-six, that's the. Age of that house, or what we call a grandma's house, is what we call it. And this was the little bunkhouse beside it, and all that, that we restored and fixed up way better all those years than it was. In the early seventies, my grandmother sold the small log cabins that. That were out in this area, and she, she sold and made this property line. And when she passed away, uh, Tony and I bought her place. The family property back to my uncle, who has left too, well, me and the bank bought it. But anyway, we got the property back, that was in nineteen ninety-four. And we started renting this house as a vacation, well, the bunkhouse was pretty much full of storage and my grandma's stuff. She's a little bit of a, grew up in the depression, and there was lots of stuff in there. Anyway, come along to two thousand and three, we had the opportunity to buy the cabins back. Which at that time were two cabins here, and three cabins here, old log cabins. Kind of dilapidated, and they'd been rented by that owners of that. Now it was dead cars in the parking lot, you know, it was kind of rundown. So we got this property back in two thousand and three, and we went to work fixing up all the cabins. Fixing Grandma's house, fixing the bunkhouse, we kind of lived in whichever house we were working on at the time. Uh, but that's kind of a history of where we're at now, so. The condo property has a limited common area around these buildings. Which is still common area, but it's specific use of the owner of that condo, there's a little bit of property around it.
So you sold them again?
Yeah, these are sold to owners.
Well, we built new.
We, we tore out old ones and replaced them with a new one.
Okay.
And that happened gradually, well, I don't know, we did the first two of like two thousand and fifteen, and a couple of years later, we did another one. All this is kind of happened gradually, these are all sold now. And we wanted to add this cottage into the resort with the same rules, the same CCNRs. That are, that are like existing with this, so, we just had our HOA meeting and. Every, all our owners voted unanimous that they're good with this. Uh, this went to Southside Water and Sewers, uh, meeting just yesterday. To explain what we were up to, and so they were good with it. And hopefully you guys are good with that, we, there's no new construction planned. Um, we're not impacting anything, the neighbor's property. Um, we're not impacting anything, the neighbors property. Uh, all their buildings were built after this one.
Right.
So.
So so the area that's in green, that's what's that's what's zone recreation.
This is recreation.
And 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 this other piece that's clear is zone.
It it is, and that's we did that on, did that on, when we first looked at this with sewer engineers, they said, you want to just do the whole thing? I said, you know, we really wanna. Keep this the family property, you're not having involved with this because. At that time, you know, we kind of want to leave this to the kids.
Yeah.
But then I hang around the kids and I think. Maybe a little more effort could be forthcoming here, so. Anyway, we still, most days I want to lead it to the kids, put it that way, Jeff. There's so many vacation rentals, this was our retirement. We actually, our house is across the street. That these two houses. With the taxes and everything and the competition in the Airbnb business. The, you know, we're just, we're thinking we'd be better off to. Here, we sell that section, uh that would be limited common area around there, so it didn't burden any of our original owners. So.
Okay, yeah. Thank you, anyone, any more questions or? So. You, you know when that was that was changed, zoning was changed to recreational?
Yeah, two thousand.
Two, two thousand eight, okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
Took me a while to figure out. What's up?
Ron and Catherine, you high quick?
Uh, actually it was Brad.
Oh, Brad and Katie.
And my and my wife knows.
But you're not supposed to talk.
And I have not talked.
Attorney left, you're good.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out in the crappy night to hear it.
I did have one question um for the applicant, what uh what are the uh the setbacks behind the cottage between cottages broadly line?
So this, this is really tight. Uh, the setback. On this side right here. Actually encroaches on the neighbors, just a hair, the eve does about this far. But we do have it. Yep. We have. The neighbors for that. Yeah.
Commissioners on i- in the staff report, there's another one B condition that would. Have the applicant show us that the cottage isn't going to in approach on any of the new. Property lines that brought that cottage has existed for so long that its grandfathered into. And and is legal nonconforming, but when they do a lot line adjustment, they will have to show that it's going to meet the new setbacks of the new property lines, not so much the. Not not the one that exists.
Okay, thank, thank you.
And and also setback requirements are from the property line, not from the condo platted lines. So there's a, there's a distinction in there, like our our setbacks, when we look at a condo plat, those are for ownership purposes. We view this whole piece as still one piece of land, one property with five different people that own it or however many there are. So we don't require the setbacks from those condo lines, because those can shift. We require it from the property.
The staff doesn't see an issue with that at this point.
I, I don't know, because I don't, I just was clarifying where we where we uh see setbacks from, so I'm not sure about that.
Yes, that'll be something that we uh before we issue the permit, we'll make sure that it isn't, you know, new. Thank you.
Do we have any public testimony? I didn't see any written public testimony, is there anybody online? So I don't know that I need to go over the rules of public testimony, I can for. Uh, part of the record.
We don't have, well, I don't know if Frank's got a lot of comment or not, but go ahead.
Okay, the rules of public testimony are. Speak into the microphone or if you're online, obviously. Like from there, so we can all understand you and sort of people at home and our future selves can understand you, state your name. Time limit is three minutes per testimony. Any public testimony may receive three extra minutes, no more from any other person. But signed up to share public testimony. For a total of no one. Comments will be limited to the specifics of this file. If any public testimony agrees with a previously shared public testimony. Please show your respect for everyone's time and simply state that you agree with that testimony. Personal or derogatory comments about another person or their position are not allowed. Clapping, cheering or booing is not allowed. Remember that this hearing is being shared live by the internet, it's being recorded for public viewing later. Okay, is they don't have their hand up, so there's no public testimony. Okay, then there's no written comments we have. I guess there was an additional uh comment from an agency panel that I didn't see. I shall, I think it was a no comment. Okay. And I don't think, since there's no public testimony, no need to rebut, no need for staff to rebut. So now I think we're at the point now uh that we can discuss the file. Or any motions are named, so I want to have, there's any discussion to be had. No. Yeah, I don't, I I think this is pretty straightforward, um it's kind of this. Interesting situation, very different than some of the ones I've I've found around. But definitely. Straightforward in terms of what we, that's what we should do. Probably want to spoken positive, at least that's what I'm, I, my opinion is. Um. So. Any, any other comments? So we, let's close public testimony, the one we, some we didn't have. So. Would any commissioner care to make a motion to approve, deny or continue this file? And for your information. In the staff report, there's a boilerplate. Or maiden.
Mister Blazer, I'd make the motion to approve. I moved to approve this project file M O D zero zero four dash twenty four for a modification of existing conditional use permit. To expand the existing resort site, finding that it is in accord with the general and specific objectives of Bonner County Comprehensive Plan. Our county revised code as enumerated in the following conclusions of law. One, the proposed modification to the condition used permit is in accord with the general and specific objectives of Bonner County Comprehensive Plan. Two, this proposal was reviewed for compliance with the criteria standard set forth. At title twelve. B C R C chapter two, subchapter two point two, B C R C chapter three, subchapter three point three. B C R C title twelve, B C R C chapter two. Subchapter two point two will review. Chapter four, subchapter four point two dash four point six, chapter seven, subchapter seven point two and seven point six, the proposal is in accord. With Bonner County revised code. Free to propose expanded use will not create a hazard. Or will not be dangerous to persons on or adjacent to the property. This decision is based upon the evidence submitted up to the time the staff report was prepared and testimony received this hearings. I further move to adopt the findings of fact and conclusions of law set forth in the staff report. Or is amended during this hearing and direct planning staff to draft written findings and conclusions. To reflect this conditional use permit. Or to reflect this motion, excuse me, and transmit to all interested parties. The action that could be taken to obtain the conditional use permit is to complete the conditions of approval as adopted. This action does not result in a taking of private property.
So here's second. All seconds, the motion. Okay, any more discussion? Uh, we have a second. During none, uh let's vote. You can now vote starting from my left, either I or N. Mister Clark, I.
Mister Blazer, I.
Alright, motion and carries, four in favor, zero opposed. Well, I think we're done with that file. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, one people came out just for us. Chairman Gabel, do you have any reminders, updates, announcements?
Direct, not chairman. We do not have any files for you guys next month. I apologize, we probably won't be holding a meeting, like I think we're. Really close to the deadline to put a notice out in about time. Are we, it's December, so are we still okay with our number? Yeah, I think this is the second, so by statute for the new members, we have to meet nine times per year. So even if that's a show up in the approved minutes and then call a closing, if you're done, uh we have to have a. No, because there was one, one meeting, we didn't have a forum, so it'll be our third meeting, I'll double check, but it should be, we've held nine meetings after tonight, so. I think you're okay. And we do have some, at least one file right now scheduled for January, so we'll hold a meeting in January. Couple of things I wanted to just point out, I I recently made some or worked on, made some changes to our our Bonner County Planning Department. Website. Let me just show you the, the, it's only because it's not even six thirty, so I thought I'd fill your time a little bit, make you feel like we got a whole meeting's worth. So for those that aren't following their comprehensive plan, this is the landing page for the comp plans of that giant. That that picture there, which was taken on a high, which is fantastic. This is the landing page for all things comprehensive plans, this has been. Little over two years, two and a half years, I I've been working on this with the plant, with the planning commission. There's a bunch of meetings we've held, these are all the adopted components. Uh, we're now down to the final component, which is the land use component. Uh, we'll be doing. Essentially a road show um around the county, um doing a bunch of open house workshops. And it'll be not the traditional, let's sit here and do a big Q and A, it'll be. And we're going to start here on the third, uh for those that live in standpoint want to show up. And we're going to have maps up, we'll be have a digital map that people will go on to and make comments on the map, see if they. Agree or disagree or have comments about the comprehensive plan happening in our area. We'll also have copies of the text itself, see if anybody wants to review that. Um, we'll, we'll probably explain four hundred times what zoning is different than comprehensive plan designation, so we'll, we'll do all that, uh we have. Right now, I think six or seven different locations around the county, we'll be publishing the list here, probably by the, by the beginning of December. Where we're going to go, so I'm coordinating all that roadshow idea, um. So that's comprehensive plan, so this has been on there for some time, uh this is similar to now the the homepage of the Bonner County site, so if you want to see. Prior meetings, you can hit this meeting archive button, well, here's, here's upcoming meetings, so there's zoning commission. Um, and then if you hit the meeting archive, it'll pop up in this. This uh thing here. You can look at the zoning commission, it'll have your, your agenda, your, your approved minutes, and then a link to that YouTube video for the, the meeting of that night, so. If you're really bored and want to go back and watch what you did a few months ago, this is the place, this is the place to see it, um. Yeah. So the other commissions are on here as well, so the planning commission, the hearing examiner, um so it's just a good landing spot for um. All of our meetings, so we've moved where we put meetings and agendas and uh minutes. Um, all to this one location, it's a lot more user friendly, I think it's easier to find. So and then here at the bottom, we now have a link to our YouTube videos, our YouTube page, we have, I think. Yeah, over three hundred subscribers, so that's fantastic, hopefully we get to five hundred some of it. Um, those are the major uh updates and changes, we also have a a LinkedIn page, so if you want to put your volunteer effort, you can. Tag that location to Bonner County Planning Department, it's separate from the just Bonner County in general, so we have a a LinkedIn page that created a couple of scale. That is all of my updates for you, um did I miss anything? We're recruiting for two positions, I always like to. I I'm in planning staff, like anytime I can plug in. Uh, we have a compliance investigator position, those are the ones that go out and do onsite inspections, so. Uh, tell all your friends a bit with, and we're also still looking for an assistant director, so like I said earlier, uh Travis Haller, who was our previous assistant director, left. For a different job about three weeks ago. And uh so we'll keep. We have. Two new planners that you guys will probably see in the future, it'll be new to you, Mister Clark, but the rest of you guys, everyone's new, so. Um, you'll have Kyle. Snyder and Dave Fisher. Dave's been at the department for a few years, he was started as a compliance investigator, then was a planning technician, and now he's a. Um, a planner, and then Kyle was a planning tech, and now was promoted to planner, so. We'll see both those guys probably presenting some judicial files in the, in the future. I think that's it, that's all again.
So we'll just call it. A ten, a tentative December.
Meeting? Yeah, we'll publish an agenda if we need to, I'm gonna shoot you guys an email, but as of right now, we don't have any items, so. I think that meeting is currently scheduled for. Uh, nineteenth, yeah. So I, I don't think we'll need to, I think we've, we've hit our nine meetings, um but I will double check.
Alright, thanks. Alright. I do. Six twenty nine, almost six thirty, and we are adjourned. Till tentatively December nineteenth, twenty twenty four.